Welcome to the 2013 Candidates Forum sponsored by Wallingford Community Women. I am Ann Whitman, Program Moderator. This segment features four of the twelve candidates running for Board of Education. The first part of the program will consist of questions asked of the candidates by members of the local media, including the New Haven Register and the Record Journal, and students from Mark T. Sheehan High School. The second part will allow each candidate to make a closing statement. During the question and answer portion of the camp program, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. Each candidate will have two minutes to make closing remarks. Before beginning questioning, I'd like to introduce four of the candidates running for Board of Education. They are, from left to right, Karen Havak, Republican. Joe Marone, Republican. Kathy Costelli, Democrat. Lorraine Connolly, Democrat. Michael Broder, Republican, and Jay Shay, Democrat, were unable to attend due to business obligations. Eric Voe of the Record Journal asks the first question of Karen Havak.
Hi Karen, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you, Eric?
Doing well, thanks. So numerous parents in town have expressed their desire for all-day kindergarten. The Early Childhood Exploratory Committee was formed earlier this year, and they've been researching it and trying to researching it and other possibilities, too. The issue comes before the Board, and they recommend to pursue all-day kindergarten. How would you vote?
Well, first of all, I don't know that they're going to recommend that.
This is, we're assuming they would recommend that.
Well, we're assuming that, but I think what we need to do is, I have an open mind about all-day kindergarten, but I think that this exploratory committee has been formed to look into all aspects. The cost, what the research-based information is, and the committee might end up recommending pre-K, all-day pre-K, or it might not be all-day kindergarten as you think of it, it might be maybe half-day kindergarten, and then all-day kindergarten on other days. So I have an open mind about all-day kindergarten, but I'd have to see what the exploratory committee comes out with.
Carolyn Bradley of Mark T. Sheehan High School will ask the next question of Joe Marone.
Hi, Mr. Marone.
Hi Carolyn, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Hi. Education in Wallingford seems to place a large emphasis on Carol Dweck's book Mindset. Why do you believe mindset is best for 21st century Wallingford school curriculum? How do you currently see the author's ideas being utilized in the classroom, and what are your ideas for the future regarding these ideologies?
Well, I think the reason that mindset fits so well with what we're doing in the Wallingford Public Schools is that it's generally a pretty basic idea. It's the idea that it's essentially how you talk to kids and how you view the world sort of determines the outcome. And so I think it's, it fits nicely with what a lot of parents are trying to teach at home, so you try to teach your kids a positive outlook, you know, look at a problem as an opportunity and not necessarily as just a problem. I really like the idea of mindset as a way to get the community around one book. You know, I read the book myself. There's a number of books you could have chosen from, but I think that this one sort of speaks to the basic, good outlook perspective. As far as how I see it used in the classroom, I think it's, it's a lot of what she, Carol Dweck, talks about in the book, and that is, you know, when you approach a child, you don't tell them you're a smart kid, and so therefore when they reach a problem that they don't feel smart about, then they feel dumb or they feel left behind. You try to approach them like, what a great effort, you know, you've put a lot of good work into that, and you approach it from that angle. And so that's where I think it's going to play out in the classroom. I think it's, hopefully teachers, and I think most of our teachers probably have a great mindset about how they handle their students now, but I think that it would be in how they help them learn where their weaknesses are and so on, to help them get better in their education.
Thank you very much. Matthew Baum of Mark T. Sheehan High School will ask the next question of Kathy Costelli.
Hello.
Hi, Matthew. Do you like Matthew or Matt?
Matthew's fine.
Matthew.
Thank you. I've realized that some schools have already began optimizing their energy, so I was wondering, have you given any thoughts about hiring energy-saving companies to evaluate school buildings?
Actually, we've already done a lot of that over the past several years, and our schools are pretty efficient when it comes to the use of electricity. All the lighting has been changed in all of the schools. We already have a low electric bill as it is because of the electric division in Wallingford. We're always looking for more opportunities, of course, and I think there is a third phase of some major initiatives that is going to take several years to put into place, but it is an ongoing process, and we're constantly looking at it.
Luther Tramella, the New Haven Register, will ask a question of Lorraine Connolly.
Good evening, Lorraine.
Hi, Luther.
On Tuesday, there was a great deal of discussion among the council candidates and the mayoral candidates about the possibility of Choate partnering more with the public school system. Now, obviously, there is some of that already in place, but can you identify some other areas beyond what exists now where the public schools and Choate Rosemary Hall could partner?
Well, our current headmaster, Headmaster Alex Curtis, is very committed to the ongoing relationship between public and private schools. This year, we introduced a new position at Choate. We have a manager of community relations, and she has met with Dr. Menzo on a number of issues. We are interested in supporting the Wallingford Education Foundation's initiative to restore the planetarium at Sheehan High School. We're interested in partnering with the community in many, many ways.
Thank you.
Carolyn Bradley will ask the next question of Karen Havak.
Hello. Hello, Caroline.
If elected, how do you plan to improve communication with parents and the community in terms of letting them know what is going on in the Wallingford school system?
Well, I think there's a proposed calendar that indicates certain communications that will happen, especially with Common Core and teacher evaluation. Part of the teacher evaluation has a parent survey portion of it, and so parents can have input that way. Parents also have, can communicate when they have conferences with their students, teachers. So any kind of way that we can increase the communication and collaboration between those parties is beneficial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matthew Baum will ask the next question of Joe Marone.
Hello.
Hi, Matthew.
Being a student at Mark T. Sheehan, I've come to realize that bullying occurs on a daily basis. I was wondering, what are your ideas in order to stop bullying in the schools?
That's a great question. You know, bullying is one of those issues that I think has many facets that you have to look at. The first is that often the bully was perhaps the victim of bullying at another time, or perhaps they have a family situation that's less than desirable, that puts them in this, this sort of position. So I think as far as the ideas are, one thing is you need to encourage kids to report it, whether you're the victim or whether you witnessed another kid being bullied. It's important that kids feel comfortable going to an adult to report it. You know, the safety of kids is, of course, our top priority. So any report of bullying needs to be investigated, you know, and it needs to be investigated in a very diligent and thorough way. And then it also needs to, you need to handle it with a degree of care, because oftentimes, like I say, the bully may be a victim of bullying in another circumstance. So I think you need to try to examine it from all aspects and determine if perhaps the bully is in, is in need of some assistance as well. So, you know, every situation needs to be thoroughly investigated. I think we need to be aggressive, and I expect our administrators to be aggressive to combat bullying, but I think we need to try to understand all sides and maybe what's behind some of the bullying to put a stop to it.
Luther Tramella of the Record Journal will ask the next question of Kathy Costelli.
Thanks for putting me on the other paper in. It's okay, don't worry. Okay, Kathy, here, with you being on the Board, do you have a problem when the Town Council rejects the contracts that the school board negotiates in good faith? And does it make it more difficult to put, go into a next, another round of negotiations when the Town Council does this?
Okay, so do I have a problem with it? Yes and no. More, probably more yes than no. They are the final word, although I don't really understand why that should be, for several reasons. As you know, this latest contract was unanimously approved by the nine members of the Board of Education, to then subsequently be turned away by the council. I don't feel the council had an opportunity to really reflect fully on all of the contents of that contract. Where we started with, you know, a contract that three years earlier had been approved by the council, that was our starting point, and a lot of changes were made within that, within that contract that impacted, financially impacted the four people in that union. So higher copays, more cost for their medical benefits. All of those factors should have been considered when you then look at an average of a 2.07 increase over three years. And what is that 2.07, or the 2.25 that they really had a problem with, which was the third year of that contract, what did that really equate to in dollars? And from what the math I've heard is that it was, you know, it's a little over $1,000. So now we're going to go to arbitration and spend $20,000 because of a $1,000 factor or difference. I do understand where the mayor's coming from, in that he doesn't want to set a precedent, but again, I don't think you can look at just the salary increase percentages as setting a precedent, when you have to look at everything that's in that contract and what roads or paths that we were successful in making. Reducing their vacation time, increasing their cost shares, increasing their premiums. Those things all have to be factored as well. And I can't get to the second part of your question because I'm out of time.
Eric Voe of the Record Journal will ask the next question of Lorraine Connolly.
Hi, Lorraine.
Hi, Eric.
So I'm curious to hear what your position on using or taking recess away from a child as a form of punishment is. There's been studies out there that say physical activity helps a child develop physically and cognitively. So do you think teachers and staff should be able to take parts of recess away from a student if they're misbehaving, or just as a form of punishment in general?
Well, Eric, you've given me something to think about. I really don't think taking away recess as a punitive measure is necessary, necessarily the right way to go about it. We're certainly thinking we're all on board with the mindset. I think we have to think of having a growing mindset, and that means, or growth mindset, and that means that we really do have to think deeply about what measures we take. If it will humiliate a child to have recess taken away, I don't think that's a very good thing. I think we just have to think a little bit more broadly.
Do you think if they're misbehaving at recess, that it'd be okay for them to stand or sit on the bench for five minutes, 10 minutes?
For a timeout? Is that what you're?
Right, until they calm down.
You know, perhaps I would sort of like to speak to some teachers to see how frequently that's occurring in the classroom. You know, I, it's, it's been a while, my daughters are grown, so I'd have to think back a little bit about some of the methods I use to quell that.
Matthew Baum of Mark T. Sheehan High School will ask the next question of Karen Havak.
Hello.
Matthew.
Do you plan on making any suggestions for changes in terms of how we evaluate and hire teachers in the school system?
I think we have a pretty good evaluation system, and as you know, with the new evaluation system that's coming into play for teachers, there's going to be a new way of doing business. It's going to be, the teachers are going to be evaluated 40% on their observation of what they're doing in the classroom, 10% on parent feedback, 45% on student growth and development, and 5% on the overall whole-school achievement. We have a pretty selective group of candidates that come here. We have a very competitive package of salary and benefits, so we do attract quite a nice group of candidates for positions in our school system, and we do do a lot of evaluating, especially for new teachers, non-tenured teachers. So I think that we have a fairly good system in place.
Luther Tramella of the New Haven Register will ask the next question of Joe Marone.
Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Luther.
I'd like to circle back and ask you the same question that I asked Kathy. I mean, you've got a situation here where the, in good faith, the union that you negotiate with has reached a settlement with the district, the management union, and then the Town Council says, "No, we won't, we won't approve this." Do you think that that's wrong?
In short, no, I don't think it's wrong. The Board has a job to do, and that is to try to negotiate in good faith with our bargaining units, which we did, and the Town Council has another job to do, and they are the ultimate, have the power of the purse. They have to protect the public funds. And so if they feel that the, that the job that the Board has done doesn't meet what their requirements are, then I think they have a responsibility to turn the contract down. I think that, you know, sometimes perhaps the Board and the Council could use more collaboration in terms of what the goals are in negotiation, but I think to, the second question you would ask Kathy was, does this, is, would this hinder other negotiations? I don't think that it does. When you sit, I've sat on many, at the negotiating table with many of the bargaining units in town, and what I've found is that, you know, you, it's the cafeteria style. You pick and choose what the best things from the other contracts are, and try to put them in the contract you're working on, and the things you don't like, you reject. So they say, "Well, can you compare us to this other unit that got, say, a 2% increase?" And we say, "Okay, but if you want what that unit got on the increase, then why don't you take what they gave us on the insurance?" And the unit says, "Well, you know, of course, we, we don't want that, we just want the, we want to pick and choose the best parts of each, each contract." So I think that, at the end of the day, you know, we sort of have different responsibilities, and I'm comfortable with the Council making the decision they do, and if they would like us to collaborate with them more, you know, in terms of negotiation, there's always been an invitation, open invitation to a Council member to sit with us at the negotiating table and work on the contracts, and, you know, I'd be willing to do that in the future.
Eric Voe of the Record Journal will ask the next question of Kathy Costelli.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, Eric.
So with internal communication and surveillance upgrades made in the schools, Wallingford has spent a good amount of money on addressing security concerns. However, the town school system remains the only one of the area schools that lacks a school resource officer. Area superintendents have described their presence as involved, visible, and proactive. Should the town school system have a school resource officer?
I think each school system has to make that determination for the needs of their particular district, and we have made the determination. Wallingford doesn't need that right now. That's a tremendous added expense of budget dollars that we would have to put toward those officers, and we really feel, you know, after having looked at this, there is no need in Wallingford for those officers at this time. That could change in the future, but at this point, we don't see a need for it for our community. That's not to say that's not necessary in other communities. Every district is different, and every district needs to address it with doing their due diligence and really looking at the issue in their area, and will that help to circumvent the security measures, or would it help to put in place the security measures that they feel they need? Presently, Wallingford does not feel we need that.
Carolyn Bradley of Mark T. Sheehan High School will ask the next question of Lorraine Connolly.
Hello, Ms. Connolly.
Hi, Carolyn.
Part of a healthy and well-rounded school is having all kids partake in extracurricular activities. As a member of the marching band and musical at Sheehan High School, I noticed the pedestal created for athletics as a first priority over the arts. Do you think there is an over-empathy on athletics in our school system and not enough attention given to activities such as art and theater and music?
Well, I have to give full disclosure here. I am a product of a New York City public school system, and I went to the High School of Music and Art, and that particular high school had a very rigorous music program and academic program. So I would say in any public school system, there should be, you know, equal emphasis on both music and the arts, or I certainly would say that that would be a great thing.
Thank you very much. Luther Tramella will ask the next question of Karen Havak.
Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, Luther. How are you?
Pretty good, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
During your previous stint on the Board, you were a very vocal advocate, along with Mike Votto, as I recall, of the importance of having quality special education programs. Since you've been off the Board, what kind of grades would you give the district as far as improving the special needs programs?
My understanding is they just went through a complete look at what the special education programs are, and they did an audit, and that is what they have done to make sure that things are going as they should. I served on the Connecticut State Advisory Council for Special Education, and as you know, or maybe some folks do know, I had a child, and I still do, who went through the entire system. All my children were graduated from the Wallingford Public Schools, but one of my children is severely impaired, so that's my interest in providing quality services for children with special education. So everything is determined at a planning and placement team meeting, their individual education plans, and that's determined by the team, so that they make sure that they're giving each child what they need to be successful and learn.
Having the perspective that you have, how would you rank Wallingford's special needs programs versus other schools that you, you're familiar with?
Again, each, each program has to be determined on the basis of each child's individual needs, so you can't really make, you know, a broad statement like that. I do think that we have some excellent programs. I think that we have made a really terrific effort of integrating children into areas that they haven't been integrated into before, and providing them a lot of new educational opportunities, which is great to see.
Eric Voe of the Record Journal will ask the next question of Joe Marone.
Hey, Joe.
Hello, Eric.
So there's been a lot of changes in schools last year with new technology being implemented throughout each school, but in terms of maintenance, would you like to see more done, and if so, where specifically?
Are you talking about IT maintenance, or are you talking about building maintenance?
Building maintenance.
Um, I think that the district has made great strides over the past several years in terms of maintenance. I think if you look around, you'll see more maintenance projects being done now than have ever been done, you know, in years prior. I think maintenance was an area of particular concern when I joined the Board, but I think that things have been turned around greatly. We have a great buildings and grounds supervisor in town, or for the district. In terms of areas where I would like to see maintenance, you know, we're putting roofs in the schools, which is, which is, which is huge. The boilers is another issue. Some of the schools have original boilers to the buildings, and, you know, boiler's a big-ticket item, so that's a special area of concern for me as well. Other than that, I think it's, a lot of it is just, you know, keeping the cracks out of the windows, keeping the grass mowed, and keeping everything in good working order.
Do you feel like more could have been done with the Lyman Hall Athletic Complex? It's a project that's been delayed for a few years now.
Well, the Lyman Hall Athletic Complex is a little bit different, because I don't really consider that a maintenance item, per se. The project is more or less dependent at this point on either public money or private fundraising. So that's not necessarily a Board project, in my view. It's more of a community project, and so if, if they're able to fundraise, or if the state were to provide additional funds for the complex, I'd like to see, you know, it would be nice to see more done with it. I mean, the track is in a state of disrepair, but that's something that the Board had looked into and set money aside to work on. The field is in good condition. It's not perhaps what, you know, certain members of the community would like to see in terms of the playing surface, but it's still in good, in good working condition. It's a good field, you know, it's safe for the, for our student athletes.
Carolyn Bradley of Mark T. Sheehan High School will ask the next question of Kathy Costelli.
Hello.
Hi, Caroline.
How do you feel about the new standardized testing Common Core? Why do you think it's better than the cap testing that has been done in the past? Do you think it will improve student achievement in the areas of math and science?
Well, not, not science, because science isn't included just right now, but math and, and language arts, yes, I do. I have great hopes for Common Core state standards. I really hope that this turns out to be what we're, what, what everybody is aspiring for it to, to be. The fact that, well, and actually, I think you were talking more about smarter balance, that's the testing component of that. Smarter, smarter balance is going to allow a student to sit at a computer, answer a question. If they don't get that question right, the computer's going to know, oops, this is a little too tough for this student, let me give them a question that's a little bit easier. So smarter balance is, is named appropriately because it's going to balance the test for that student to find out where is that student educationally? Where, where are they struggling? Where, where aren't they struggling, actually? It's going to find that level, and that's going to help the teachers, once we understand how we're going to actually use the data out of this smarter balanced testing, which I don't think we know yet, but once we do know how we're going to use that data, that's going to help teachers to individualize instruction for those kids and help them get back to grade level where they need to be. And again, I think Common Core in, in and of itself is going to be a great, great way for us to get there. Digging deeper, giving kids more time to really understand the concepts, as opposed to, oops, you know, Monday, we're starting the next chapter, so too bad you didn't get it this week, we're moving ahead. Those kids are now going to be given an opportunity to really show that they know what they're, what they've been taught.
Thank you very much. Matthew Baum of Mark T. Sheehan High School will ask the question of Lorraine Connolly.
Hello.
Hi, Matthew.
Colleges are now beginning to emphasize the importance of the SAT scores more than ever. So what would you do specifically to improve the SAT scores of students at Lyman Hall and Sheehan?
Well, that's a, a good question. I think the best preparation for those tests really is for kids to feel successful in their courses. It's really by taking the most vigorous courses offered at the two high schools that you'll get the best preparation for that exam. So I, I think if students really are allowed to take the most rigorous courses and are supported by their teachers, I don't think we have to be as concerned as whether or not, you know, they'll do well on those exams. I think they'll be very prepared for them.
Thank you.
That concludes the question and answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement. Ms. Havak, will you please start?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the Wallingford Community Women for this opportunity to, to address the voters of the town of Wallingford. I just want to give you a little bit of background about me. All three of my children, as I said previously, have been educated in the Wallingford Public School System. I hold a bachelor's degree in science, I hold a master's degree in public health, I'm a registered nurse. I've been a Board member in Wallingford previously for nine years. I served as the chairperson and the vice-chairperson, and I'm really interested in serving the public again in this capacity. It's a very rewarding job. I enjoy seeing our students succeed, and I ask for the opportunity to serve in this position again. Thank you.
Mr. Marone?
Thank you. I would also like to thank the Wallingford Community Women. I'd like to thank Eric, Caroline, Matthew, and Luther for your engrossing questions. You know, after four years on the Board, I could make a list of perhaps all the projects and all the things that have been accomplished, but none of these things I could do by myself. We work as a team, as a nine-member team. We work closely with the administration, we have a great administration. We're very fortunate in this town. There are a few differences between myself and some of the other candidates that I'd just like to highlight. I have three kids, two are in elementary school. I have two kids in two different elementary schools due to the reconfiguration, so I know what it's like to go from, to try to race from Pond Hill to Stevens at the end of the day, to pick up the kids. You know, we're all in the same boat as parents. There are some minor issues in the district, there are some obstacles to overcome, but nothing that we can't surmount. And the, the thing that makes me excited to be here is when I walk around and I see parents at, you know, open house, I see parents at open houses at schools, I see parents on the baseball field, or at karate practice, or what have you, they're excited about education in this town, and they have good things to say about it, and I'm just proud to be a part of it. You know, when we talk about the budget, because the Board spends a lot of time on the budget, and when we talk about it, I hear people say things like, what are we going to get from the mayor? What are we going to get from the Town Council? The money, to me, doesn't come from the mayor or the Town Council, it comes from my neighbor and my friends who live across town. And so I feel like, at the end of the day, I need to be able to look these people in the face and say that I've given you a good value for your education dollar. And I'm proud to say that I think in the past four years, we've done that. It's been an honor to serve you over four years, and I humbly ask for your vote on November 5th to continue serving you for the next two. Thank you.
Ms. Costelli?
Thanks. I, too, would like to thank the Wallingford Community Women, and of course, our reporters and our, our students. Thank you so much for your, your very well-thought-out questions. I'd also like to thank the camera crew, because I think we overlook them a lot, and the people in the auditorium. the people in the audience. Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy day to be here, to listen to what we have to say. I'm the mother of five. I have a bachelor's degree in special education, which I never used because I was in that glut in the '70s when special ed was that field that, you know, they didn't fill positions back then. It wasn't mandated if they didn't have the money. So I went on into a business career at Anthem Blue Cross for 27 years. I'm seeking my fourth term on the board, and that means that I can bring to the table six years of experience serving on the board. Education is on the cusp right now of major reform, and I've been a part of watching that unfold over the past several years. I think the members of the board, as they go forward, need to be able to learn from the administration, listen to what they have to say, listen to each other. We have to be able to question, and we have to challenge, but always challenging with respect. And above all, we have to care. We have to care for the kids. This is about the kids, and that has to be foremost in our minds. And it is in mine. Every decision I make is always made with, "Is this in the best interest of children? Does it meet the needs of our -- or does it meet what our vision and our mission statements state?" We want to make sure every student is able to achieve their ultimate level of achievement. I want to remind everybody, voting is November 5th, Tuesday, November 5th. I hope you'll all come out and vote. And remember, it's a local election. This is where your voice is heard the loudest. Make sure they hear yours. Thank you.
Ms. Connolly?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Wallingford community women and the panel here today. I also would like to thank the candidates. You know, I think we all have more in common than our differences. Even though I've worked in the private school world for 25 years, as I mentioned before, I am a product of New York City public school education. I was -- got my -- went on to get my BA and master's degree. I am a certified teacher as well. My two daughters went through the elementary and middle school schools here, and they were beautifully prepared for their next step. When I think about the Wallingford Public School mission, it's to inspire, educate, and support all students as they discover and pursue their best. I think about that mission statement, and I think we can always be fiscally responsible and forward-thinking. I don't think those two philosophies are mutually exclusive, but I do think both philosophies can work together for a common good. What I've been impressed with is in the last 18 months, our school superintendent has really put Wallingford on the map. This summer, I was listening to a national public radio program, and I heard one of my daughter's former middle school teachers speak about the Common Core standards. Earlier in the year, another NPR program had mentioned the community garden that our food service director is building at Highland Elementary School. And, you know, I was just so pleased that Wallingford was chosen as the subject for national public radio. You know, it wasn't Cheshire, it wasn't Guilford, it wasn't Madison, it was Wallingford. And so I think we've --
Thank you.
-- done an extraordinary job, and I'd like to continue supporting our educators.
Thank you. This concludes Part 1 of the 2013 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford community women, I thank you for watching and remind you to vote on November 5th.